Twenty twenty-two, city council meeting. Our invocation will be given by Elias Wilson, Community Development Specialist. Oh, Shirley Murdoch, all right. Very good, thank you. So it'll be Shirley Murdoch, and she's a member of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, so Shirley will come up and do that, and then please remain standing for the invocation and for the pledge of allegiance.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are gathered together tonight in the capacity of a city council meeting. We are so grateful to live in America where individual citizens are given the privilege and opportunity of electing the leaders and officials that will guide and direct the affairs of their city, or their county, or their government. And we give the gratitude for this privilege. And we are grateful that Dr. Candace Bridget McCandless has been elected to the City Council and ask blessings upon her for guidance and direction. We're all so mindful at this time of the family of Karen DeLucy for their loss of her as they go into the holiday season. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask thee to bless the mayor and each member of the council with guidance and discernment as they determine the laws, regulations, and things to be about to make Independence, Missouri the best place to live. We love thee and give thee our gratitude for thy many blessings, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Do I mean to pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. Next, we have the I-STAR Award. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number twenty-two dash eight-two-zero, a resolution recognizing James Pollock, Stormwater Superintendent, with the Municipal Services Department as the I-STAR Award recipient for November twenty-twenty-two. Whereas the city employee recognition program recognizes outstanding performance and exemplary acts of service by employees of the city of Independence, and whereas an employee committee selects I-STAR independence, service, and teamwork above responsibilities, award recipient for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best represent public service, and whereas the employee recognition committee has selected James Pollock, Stormwater Superintendent, with the Municipal Services Department as the Employee of the Month for November twenty-twenty-two.
Yep, thank you. And with no objections, I'm going to give Councilman Fierce just a moment to recognize some Boy Scouts.
Yes, I'm pleased to let you just take a look and introduce scouts from PAC four-three-eight-three. That's East Thirty-Ninth Street Community of Christ Congregation. We have nine scouts with us tonight and seven leaders. They're working on their Arrow of Light badge, which is the highest badge in Cub scouting. So, good job, fellows, welcome, and, or ladies and gentlemen, I should say, and welcome, and we're really happy you're here tonight.
Kind of a, we may ask you on it. And also, we need to, Madam City Clerk, have the presentation resolution approved. And so if you, so can you please take the roll call for the resolution recognizing James Pollock for the I-STAR Award?
We'll need a motion in a second.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. This brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any councilmembers, well, Councilmember Hobart, sorry.
My apologies.
It's my fault.
I would move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
You have a motion in any second?
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion in a second? Any councilmembers wishing to pull any items off for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Two-two-eight-two-one, please.
Two-two-eight-two-one. And that's item number, which one is that?
Under resolution, number two-two-eight-two-one.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can you please pull two-two-eight-two-three?
Okay. So, two folks have, two councilmembers have asked to pull twenty-two-eight-twenty-one and twenty-two-eight-twenty-three. We'll pull those out. Any others for separate consideration? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the consent items, then we'll come back for the other two items that have been pulled out.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. That brings us to twenty-two-eight-twenty-one. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to kind of give a little bit of background on why we are repealing, dissolving the on-the-roll committee, not to go into long history and to pull out the scrolls of what we were doing there with the, beginning with the downtown redevelopment committee, which helped formulate, took sixteen plans, put it into one plan to move the city forward in the northwest side of Independence with all the needs that we have. So fast forward, almost four years later, we have accomplished quite a bit of stuff within that downtown redevelopment report. We have a twenty-two million dollar development moving forward on Twenty-four Highway from two-ninety-one to Wilson Road. We have Inglewood, who is moving forward with their developments with Inglewood Arts. They have formulated a community improvement district, which was recommended in the DRCC report. The Independence Square is moving forward and doing very well. We are having the downtown streetscape discussion that is still moving forward under design. Truman Connected, which is from Truman Library to the Truman Sports Complex, is under design. The Independence Square Association, or the Independence Square, has formulated and executing their community improvement district, which was recommended in the DRCC report. Fairmont, working with the Community Service League and the other stakeholders there, we are at the beginning stages of formulating a community improvement district there. So, a lot of good stuff. I want to say a big thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and the EDC, who were very much involved. Dan O'Neil represented the EDC, Lori Dean Wiley represented the Chamber of Commerce as a committee person. Councilman Hobart was also sitting on the committee there with me, and Jody Krantz, and all the city staff over, over the past few years that have kind of helped set the pace and the stage. So, moving forward with this being dissolved, we are going to work directly with the stakeholders, city staff, and the stakeholders of those projects that are still out there moving. So with that, I move for approval of twenty-two-eight-two-one.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. That brings us to twenty-two-eight-twenty-three. Councilmember?
Mr. City Manager, can you go and overview why we're asking for this moratorium?
Yes, sir. Councilmember and mayor and other members of the council, as you know, there's been a few speakers over the past several months and weeks who have come to address the city council about short-term rentals. Sometimes those are known as Airbnbs, or VRBO, or any other number of platforms. Several years ago, the city did adopt Unified Development Ordinance restrictions on time, place, and manner operations for those businesses, just like you would any other business in the city. But some of the speakers over the last few weeks and months have highlighted some of the challenges that they're facing on the front lines in the neighborhood there. So, a temporary moratorium right now would allow city staff to continue finalizing that UDO amendment, view the document with stakeholders, like those citizen speakers who've come before the council, and just make sure we've got the concerns that have been brought forward to all of you addressed in such a way that it satisfies those stakeholders without retroactively telling them that they need to go back and address or amend something after the fact that the council has perhaps updated that UDO code.
You asked for six months. Do you think it's going to take that long to update everything?
I would hope that we could move that along faster, but I wouldn't want to understate how long that might take, and then we end up going long. So I think that is an up-to. The UDO amendment, at this point in time, has been drafted. It's been presented to the Planning Commission with a recommendation of due pass. It's currently slated to have a first reading at the November twenty-first meeting, and a second reading at the second. But I, I believe, you know, the council has the ability to ask us to hold on that if we need to, just to make sure we get all of the citizen feedback that we need. And then once this is passed, that we would ask the council to rescind that action if we're satisfied prior to that six-month period.
I guess I, I don't know. I have a problem with the six months. It just seems like an awful long time. And my concern is if something good would come up, you know, we have this in place, and there's no recourse from bill to prove or anything. I don't think I'll be able to vote no on this, but I understand the intent of it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any further discussion on twenty-two-eight-twenty-three?
Mayor.
Please.
Mr. City Manager, do we know how many short-term rentals we have in our city right now? Or is that something we need to, we can get later on?
Staff's telling me it's about twenty-five or thirty.
Twenty-five or thirty? And so when they're short-term rentals, are we taxing them at a hotel rate?
Yes.
So, so there's revenue that comes off of these?
Correct, yes, yes.
Do we, do we know how much revenue we generate off of this?
The most recent informa, I know the, the council was copied on an email from one owner yesterday who stated that they're bringing in about eighteen thousand dollars a year off of their rentals. Of course, those are receiving the six-point-five percent voter-approved transient guest tax. I'm not sure if that's on the high end or not, but that gives you an approximation of what we may see off of those.
It might be helpful if we understand, you know, what, what those twenty-five or thirty year, however many, just what the revenue base is for those. That, that helps us have a little more knowledge of what we're, what we're currently receiving off of it, and then if we need to expand that, or grow that with more, or less, or whatever we want to do. So, if we could do that, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
I, I think we can, and we'll look to do that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you. That, to Councilman Steinmeier's point, I was also going to make the suggestion that if you haven't already reviewed it, please review. Kirsten Connolly actually wrote a very great email, who is also a business owner, lives on the square, and they own and operate several Airbnbs. It's very well-written, very well-stated. She would be here this evening, but she had other engagements to be in.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. Yeah.
Anybody give me a motion on this one?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve twenty-two-eight-two-three.
Second.
All right, got a motion in a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-two-eight-twenty-three.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
No.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Twenty-two-eight-twenty-three passes. That brings us to public hearings. And if you can proceed, and this will open a public hearing.
A public hearing for the application by Beth Hobart requesting a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast at nine-ten East Manor Road. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This special use permit was considered by Planning Commission on September twenty-seventh of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this special use permit. This property has an accessory garage that has a loft converted into a living space. The applicant plans to live in the main house. Therefore, under our code, this application aligns with a bed and breakfast, requiring the special use permit. I have no new information to provide.
Any discussion or questions? I'll close the public hearing, and then any discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
My question is, we just, we just did a moratorium on short-term rentals. Does this fall into that, or because it's a bed and breakfast, is it separate?
Could you address that question to the city manager, so?
Absolutely, Mr. Walker.
If I could defer to the city attorney to clarify that.
So, the, the moratorium that was just approved doesn't apply to any applications that have already been received or currently being processed. It prevents new applications from being accepted, but any that are already in, in the pipeline will still consider to be, and be reviewed and processed accordingly. So, including ones, anything on the agenda this evening?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
We'll need to read the bill first.
Okay, go ahead.
Bill number twenty-two-dash-one-zero-zero, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast at nine-ten East Manor Road in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. This will open a public hearing.
A public hearing for the application received from Crafts and Cocktails LLC for consumption of intoxicating liquor license located at one-seven-two-zero-one East US Forty Highway, Suite one-fifteen. Full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tom Skanell. I'm the Community Development Director. So Crafts and Cocktails is a new business. It's located in the Country Meadows Shopping Center along Forty Highway, essentially the southeast corner of Forty Highway and Shrank. It's a shopping center that has a variety of different uses in, in there, offices, restaurants, that sort of thing. So Crafts and Cocktails, it's an arts and crafts studio that will allow patrons to bring in adult beverages. This has been reviewed by, by staff, and we have nothing new to add.
And this is a full public hearing, so if there's any other further discussion from anyone?
Hi, I'm Shelley Foster. I am the owner of my new business, Crafts and Cocktails. I am a resident of Independence, where I reside at Drum Farm Center for Children, where I'm a foster parent. The Crafts and Cocktails have been widely received. It's sort of a spin to a paint and silk. So, people would bring in their own food, their own alcoholic beverages. I would not provide any of that. So, it's just a fun place to be.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed. Do you have a question, or?
I just had a question.
Yeah.
Does that mean we can just come in and get a little tipsy and throw glitter all over each other? It's not that kind of crafts?
Well, we got plenty of glitter.
All right, I'm going to close this public hearing.
Council action is requested regarding the application received from Crafts and Cocktails LLC for consumption of intoxicating liquor license located at one-seven-two-zero-one East US Forty Highway, Suite one-one-five.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. This brings us to non-ordinance items. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number twenty-two-dash-eight-two-four, a resolution for approval of an agreement between the City of Independence, Missouri, and the Independence Chamber of Commerce for the establishment and operation of the Independence Economic Development Partnership.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So, several months ago, I think I started this by taking, by proposing some action at that time. And at that time, we asked for the Independence Economic Development Corporation and the chamber to make proposals for how they would help with economic development here in Independence. Unfortunately, we only received the proposal from the chamber. I say unfortunately because I would have liked to have seen what the IEDC was proposing, but, but they declined to make a proposal. So, certainly, we do need economic development in Independence, and, and I've looked at this, and I really like the resolution and the deliberables and some of the, the proposed actions that are going to be taken. So, I'm really pleased with what I'm seeing here. I just am sad that we don't have the other alternative to take a look at as well, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else, other discussions on this item?
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, I was looking at the background. It says the city pays a hundred and seventy thousand for the EDC. Where, where does that specifically come out of?
Out of the electric utility budget.
So it's IPL that pays for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How long have we done that?
I have worked for the city for a decade, and it's been at least that long, and was looking at some historical budgets, and the documents I was able to access went back fifteen years, and it was at least through the, the last fifteen years.
Okay. Is there any plans to, to move that out of utilities and back into the city for city oversight and, and budgeting?
I've not had those conversations. I certainly understand that, that might, that's a desire for some, but we just, the competing resources in the general fund, we've not had that conversation yet, but it certainly doesn't preclude us from exploring that and making sure we're being rational and equitable in the way we compensate for that service.
Yeah, just, just my concern being, you know, the IPL is supposed to be run in a businesslike fashion, separate from the city. If we're going to partner with that, I'd like to see what IPL gains from that versus what the city gains from that, or should it be cleaner and better to budget just from the city?
Yes, I, I would agree, and I think doing that, we did that, as you recall, that cost allocation exercise, that was something the Utility Advisory Board had asked for for several years, and we now have a better handle on how that's compensated for. I, I think, you know, looking at some of these other special agreements bears going through that exercise as well.
That'd be, that'd be terrific. So, if I'm reading this correctly, because sometimes I look at it and I just get caught up in it, and so it's one-seventy, it would be one-seventy, one-forty, and then the ten. So it's three-hundred-and-twenty thousand?
No, sir.
Okay.
So before, or I should say presently, the city has contributed a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to that entity, the Economic Development Council. An additional ten thousand dollars was treated as a pass-through that went from the city to the Independence Economic Development Council, and then was used for that organization to join the regional Kansas City Area Development Council, which is the entity that solicits all of the projects for the Kansas City metropolitan area. Under this proposal, the city's total contribution would be a hundred and forty thousand dollars, inclusive of that ten thousand dollar pass-through.
Okay, okay, I'm glad I asked.
Yeah, right.
So, so Councilmember Fierce, are, are, are you wanting to see more from this before we vote on it, or are you content with the way it sits right now?
No, I'm comfortable with the way it's, it's, it's sitting, so. Mr. Mayor, one question, follow-up to City Manager, if I could.
Please proceed.
So just to make clear, make sure we're clear, since June, since we took the action in June, we've not made any payments to IEDC, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Very briefly, and if I may address the City Manager. Mr. City Manager, it's my understanding that this also moves us in the direction of the more common model for economic development, used not just regionally, but sort of throughout the country now, is that right?
That, that is correct. As part of this research for this proposal, a number of entities were looked at, frankly, throughout the Midwest, but specifically here within the Kansas City metropolitan region, that nine-county area, and this merged hybrid model is what our peers are operating off of.
Very excited for it. Thank you, Councilmember Fierce. I'll be voting yes.
Any further discussion? I just want to say I'm in favor of this also. What I really, really like about this, and for anybody who's listening tonight, this is important, it was truly where two entities came together and said, this is the best practice for the city of Independence going forward. And I think that's very, very important, that we have that kind of kumbaya moment in policymaking. And that's what I really like about this. I know there are some things that need to work out, there's some still details, but I'd really like it when, when people that have ideas from opposing viewpoints get together and then come to us and say, hey, we've worked out the details, and that way, we don't have to resolve it, and it's going to be, in my opinion, much more efficient, and we're not going to have this duplication we've had in the past. And with a lot of, a lot of the board members who served on each were members of the Chamber of Commerce and members of the, the EDC, why not merge them together and use their resources together in one united front? And so I like the idea a lot. With that being said, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. That brings us to ordinances, and Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number twenty-two-dash-zero-nine-nine, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept a grant from Mid-America Regional Council in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars for the city's senior adult nutrition site program for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and execute the amendment, Community Center Services Agreement, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second and final reading.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. That brings us to the next ordinance item. Please proceed.
Bill number twenty-two-dash-one-zero-one, an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a certain contract for sale of real estate in exchange for payment of twenty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-five dollars for land designated as city surplus property, one-two-eight-two-zero, East Forty-third Terrace South, and to do all the things necessary to consummate said sale. Second and final reading.
Do we hear any discussion? Do we hear any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the item passed. Madam City Clerk, twenty-two-five-oh-eight, please.
Bill number twenty-two-dash-five-zero-eight, an ordinance approving a final plat for Newtown at Harmony. Bill number 22-508, an ordinance approving a final plat for Newtown at Harmony, Plat 3 in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 22508 passed. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number 22-509, an ordinance approving a final plat for Newtown at Harmony, Plat 4 in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 22509 passed. That brings us to first readings.
Bill number 22-102, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two new Spartan Custom four-door pumper fire trucks from Precision Industries, Inc., for $1,440,876 and 1 cent, and making the necessary appropriations. Bill number 22-103, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a body arts services business at 116 West US 24 Highway in Independence, Missouri.
That brings us to Councilmember comments. Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you.
Nothing for me tonight either, Mayor.
Wow. You guys got the memo. Thank you. However, this person will not. Councilmember Hobart?
Memo?
Yeah.
What memo? Last Saturday, we had a, a short ceremony honoring Karen Marie DeLuci, DeLucy. The city has planted a redbud tree with some, a nice little edging and a, and a plaque at the Vale Mansion, which Karen absolutely loved. Her daughter was there and told some funny stories, and her husband and her son. And, you know, it was, it was a really short, but a very nice, nice ceremony. It was cold and windy and rainy, and our mayor made the decision to move outside anyway. And as we all started to talk and gather, the clouds cleared, and it, it got sunny out. So, I'm sure she heard us and probably thought it was too much. But anytime you go now to the Vale Mansion, when you...
They actually had turds at all.
We love you, Shirley. So, Charlotte, our, our amazing arborist, tree person, planting person, who absolutely treats all the city property like her own backyard. She planted Karen's redbud right at the entrance to the parking lot, and she did that specifically so that Karen's tree would be the first thing you see when you get there and the last thing